Welcome to the September eighteenth, uh, city council meeting. We've had the pledge of allegiance and, uh, we didn't have any additional announcements that I see other than one. We have a group of elementary school students and I'll turn it over to Todd and Eric to explain a little bit more about the great things they did this week.
Uh, Hoosier Road Elementary, um, decided to, the students there decided to help out with a, a, an awesome opportunity to help an elementary school in the Houston, Texas area that was affected by Hurricane Harvey. And so if you wanna, Mrs. Fisher, if you want to bring your, uh, crew up of kiddos here and discuss what's going on so the community can be aware of it. You guys can go, if you want to have, yeah, if you can go to the mic and then present there.
So my name is Mrs. Fisher and I'm a teacher at Hoosier Road Elementary. And I have a group of students here today and this is Mrs. Washburn who's also a teacher at Hoosier Road. And we, as a school, kind of came up with an idea together. It started with some students who were very concerned about what happened and with the hurricane and they wanted to make a difference. And this idea kind of spiraled and I'm gonna let them kind of share a little bit about it. So I'm gonna start with Lila. She's gonna just kind of talk about what made her interested in learning and making a difference.
So we heard about hurricane and they, there was so many touch troubles. So I had, we had to help with the hurricane. So I researched, um, about what we need to do to help and whether it's back before available was the moving, so we did that first. And then, um, we, uh, we didn't think that was good enough. So we started doing, uh, those supplies.
Anthony, you want to tell them what our classes and some of our classes have been doing?
Um, so like, we've been doing like making posters and, um, like telling the other classes to like, um, help for Harvey. And, um, he had a red bike in Blue Day and he was giving one dollar and maybe raised over nine hundred dollars.
Wow. You're doing great.
To see if we could get some help with the town because the ripple effect kept getting bigger. Their ideas got so big that we needed to rally the town around this idea. So it was pretty cool. We had the news at our school today and they did a really great coverage on what the kids were doing. And it's been so neat because there's been other, I think there's eight elementary schools now who are all helping us collect. And we have a semi who's gonna come and drive to Bravburn on Monday, next Monday, um, filled with all the donations the kids have brought in. Do you want to tell?
So if you want to, you, you got a couple of supplies you can use on Monday. So, um, food sticks, uh, like this, uh, rulers and, um, and boxes and pencils and things.
So any school supplies or classroom decor? A lot of the classrooms, I mean, they don't have a classroom. They're going to an abandoned high school building. So they have nothing there for their kids to come to school on Monday. So anything that we can bring, they're super excited about. So furniture, even bookcases and things? Also reaching out to, um, some of the local businesses because they also need personal items. We had people donate tooth, over eight, eight hundred toothbrushes, toothpaste, floss kits, anything like that also for those personal items. The students been contacting local businesses and putting posters in the school, or into the businesses. We talked to them about how to talk to someone when they go to the business and ask for the manager or whoever the owner was to try to get it out in the business world too and Fishers. And they've been making phone calls themselves, finding the number and writing their script and what are they going to say and really having their voice heard for that. So how can we fill up this truck in not a lot of time? It's a quick turnaround. And then Lucas wants to kind of talk about how it feels to make a difference.
So we wanted to help Hurricane Harvey get done, but we didn't know how to. So we were thinking, and Mr. Westfield, Mrs. Westfield president owned a trucking company and he donated here on Monday. So we had the idea to donate and I'm happy that we're being a world changer and making a difference in our world.
That's awesome.
She has one more plug for our project.
Um, if you want to see our flyer and our commercial, you can go to our website.
What is that?
The kids today were so thankful that Mr. Muller and Mr. Zimmerman came. They wanted to send you this poster with our picture with you on it. So.
Oh, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And anybody that wants to make a donation can drop it off at the school, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, we have our carnival this Friday night too. We're taking donations there and Saturday from eight to noon. But the doors will be open for you to go and try to school day through.
Great, thank you.
Well, thank you, uh, young men and women. Uh, we were named, uh, the number one city in the nation to, to live in today. And, uh, this is, this is the reason why. Young people like that. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And Scott, those might be future Launch Fishers members. That's very industrious. Uh, Eric, do you have anything from the finance committee?
No, the finance committee met on Wednesday and we reviewed the budget, which we will get into in great detail with the mayor's presentation tonight. So.
Okay. We got the consent agenda. Any changes or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Pete, seconded by Cecilia. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Let's move on to item number seven, R. zero-nine-one-eight-one-seven, resolution of the common council, uh, making preliminary determination to enter into one or more leases. Ms. Bradford.
Ms. Bradford, city controller. If I can, I'm gonna talk about items seven and eight together. You guys can vote on that separately. Basically, item seven and eight, due to a state law change this summer, uh, two public hearings must be held by council prior to adoption of a preliminary term of recognition. And so basically these are pretty much identical to what was passed in August. It's just the language is updated based to resolutions clearly supersede, um, the prior month. There's a little bit more, um, financial information and this is just the next step to the Udo project.
Any questions?
So David, to be clear, we need to have a public hearing on each of these items. So if you could hold a public hearing on item number seven and then on number eight as well, we'll, and then we can vote on them.
These items, these two items have also been the finance committee twice.
Okay. Okay, we'll open it up first for, uh, number seven, which is R. zero-nine-one-eight-one-seven. Anyone in the public wishing to speak on this matter, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close that. And the second one, number eight, R. zero-nine-one-eight-one-seven-A. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close that public hearing.
Does there need to be on item seven, it's a second public hearing, Chris? Does, any suspension of the rules?
No, it's just to meet the state law requirement that Lisa was mentioning.
Once you have the public hearing, it can be the final vote?
It can be, yes.
I'll make a motion for item seven to approve.
Uh, motion by Pete, seconded by Eric. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against?
No, I'll make a motion on item number eight to approve.
And motion by Pete, seconded by Todd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Number nine, R. zero-nine-one-eight-one-seven-C, request for an exemption of the UDO. Mr. Bagato.
Good evening, Tony Bagato, director of planning and zoning. Uh, the item before you is a request of an exemption for Fall Creek Elementary. Uh, they are looking to add a chicken coop, um, with some chickens keeping, no roosters, just for their school, their education program. This has been done in the past and, um, I will probably looking at doing an exemption from the ordinance for chicken coops from all schools next month so we can have this just done internally since it's pretty standard now as part of the education. And staff is recommending approval. We have support from Fall Creek Elementary here as well, a group here that's in support of it. So if you have any questions, can help you.
Yeah, I think the universal exemption brought up last time. We looked at this and I think that would be beneficial.
That's exactly where I was going.
So the group here tonight is pro-chicken. Is that correct? Just want to double check. Alright, very good.
That way your chickens have a close, um, office.
Any questions for Tony?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Pete, seconded by Todd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations. Chickens are happy. We'll move on to ordinances. Uh, number, number ten.
One voice, don't kill me now.
O-nine-one-eight-one-seven-A, the budget. Mr. Mayor.
budget presentation to this legislative body and I, I always appreciate the opportunity and it's always, at least for the last decade, been a wonderful story of, um, sound fiscal management by the fiscal body that I stand before today. And I apologize for my voice. I hope to make it through this presentation and then probably take off because I'm, I'm feeling a bit under the weather. Uh, but, uh, before I get started on the presentation, I have to, uh, give a great deal of gratitude to a number of individuals that represent the collective work that's before you tonight. Lisa Bradford, our, uh, controller, did a wonderful job, uh, helping me put this together. She's done a fabulous job in her transition into the, the new role, all while trying to deal with an audit and putting the budget together. And that's a heck of a lot of work. Uh, as well as Lori Mensch helped put this budget together. And then frankly, the, um, the leadership team that, uh, that I'm blessed to have around me, uh, with all the department heads and Chris and Leah and the entire team, uh, actually makes the budget process, uh, a very painless endeavor, uh, from my perspective. We set goals and objectives. We all understand what the financial, um, parameters are we're working in. And, uh, each and every one of them always tries to figure out how to get the, get the job done within the confines and constraints of our fiscal reality. And to be honest with you, I think our fiscal reality is the envy of just about any other municipality in the state of Indiana. And certainly with today's recognition of being named, um, the best place to live in America, it might very well be the envy of many communities across the country. So, uh, in brief, um, I have to thank the finance committee chairman, um, Eric Muller, along with the finance committee members, Cecilia Kobo, Selena Stoller, and John Weingart too, which were not able to be here tonight, but have both attended, uh, the, the multiple finance committee meetings we had where we not only talked about broad financial strategies, but also delved really into the details of the budget before you. Uh, and this budget was unanimously approved, uh, recommended out of the finance committee to the, the larger body of the city council. And that's what we're here tonight. Not only do a formal presentation to you, but by state statute, uh, provide for a public hearing for the residents. Uh, this, um, has been advertised appropriately, uh, in the, in the, um, local newspapers as determined by the state of Indiana. So, uh, following to tonight's public hearing, we have one more opportunity at our final council meeting in October to approve the budget and then by November first, per state statute, we have to have the budget approved. So let's talk a little bit about Fishers fiscal health. As many of you recall, one of the, uh, main metrics for us to make sure that we're doing okay from a financial perspective is what kind of cash reserves we have. And if you think about it, much like at your house, you have income coming in, you have expenditures going out, and what you have left says a lot about whether or not you had a good year or a bad year. Uh, we maintain from a fiscal discipline standpoint in our general fund, which is our largest bucket of money, that we will keep fifty percent of any current year's property tax revenue. That's what we think we need to keep in the bank for occasions like downturns in the economy or national disasters. Or frankly, um, just unforeseen circumstances that we may need that, uh, revenue for. Uh, so if you look at this chart above, you will see the light green is where we, where our cash balances have been in the general fund. The dark green is what we're required to have for our fiscal policy. As you can see, we every year have exceeded our need, um, by millions of dollars in our cash reserve fund, which I think is a wonderful testament to our financial management. In two thousand seventeen, uh, we exceeded it by two point nine million dollars. And we anticipated by two, at the end of two thousand eighteen, still exceeding the cash reserve policy by nearly two point four million dollars, which is a sound financial position for the city to be in. Part of managing ourselves this way has led us to be able to have the only triple-A bond rating in the state of Indiana for a municipality. Quite simply, how do we maintain adequate cash reserves? You don't spend more than you take in in a given year. Uh, many, many cities find themselves in structural deficits, which means year in, year out, you're spending more money than you're taking in. Here, this graph shows you basically that on any given year, we have always brought in more money than we've spent. And that's just sound fiscal discipline. And in the few occurrences where we did decide to spend more than we brought in, it was a decision to spend it on a one-time recurring capital item, not an oncurrent, uh, ongoing recurring operational cost. Our main sources of revenue continue to be county option income tax and property tax revenue. Uh, county option income tax is growing at a, a very nice clip based on population growth in our county. Uh, one of the things we need to continue to monitor is our distribution of that based on the state funding formula. And we're continuing to look at that. We had some concerns this year, uh, as we noticed that we saw about a six hundred thousand dollar difference between what we were forecasting and what we actually received. But fortunately, we had been budgeting very conservatively on the expenditure side. We were able to absorb that six hundred thousand dollar, uh, change. In the property tax area, as many, many talk about, um, circuit breaker loss in, in the world we live in today where we have caps on residential and commercial, the one, two, and three percent, if you will, constitutional limit of what you'll ever pay in property taxes. The key to being able to mitigate the downside of that from a cost perspective is continued growth. You have to continue to grow as a community, growth in your assessed value. This chart here demonstrates the pretty phenomenal growth we've seen in our, that gross assessed value, uh, over the last few years. From two thousand fourteen to two thousand eighteen, you've seen almost a one and a half billion dollar increase in our assessed value. That is truly extraordinary because that does not really, um, in previous years where we would have seen significant growth, a lot of that would have come from annexation. That one point five billion is really about growth, just pure growth in our community, either in new, new builds or frank, frankly, positive trending in our current properties. So really extraordinary. This next one is really when you go, when you go down from growth assessed value, you go to net assessed value. What that is basically talking about is once you net out all the deductions that the state of Indiana allows a property owner, what is the tax base that you really have to share this burden over? Again, you can see if, uh, significant increases in our assessed value. Why does that matter to the average resident? Let's say we have ten dollars of burden, tax burden that we need to spread out over our residents. The more assessed value we have means the less burden on each individual resident. So the more we grow our tax base, the lower the overall tax rate becomes, the lower the overall individual tax burden becomes on the resident. And so as we grow as a community, as we invest in our community, the ability to grow our assessed value and share that tax burden over a larger portion of, uh, assessed value is really, really critical. So some of the, uh, city accomplishments over this last year, it's been a busy, busy year. Uh, last year named Indiana's, uh, Indiana's Chamber of Commerce City of the Year. Uh, our economic development front in the last two and a half years since you guys were elected into office, we've seen four thousand new jobs come to the city of Fishers, which is extraordinary. Over three hundred twenty million dollars of private investment. So really a wonderful job by all the policymakers here in, in, in really pushing our community forward. Some of those, uh, more unique things are the formation of the Indiana IOT lab, uh, Knowledge Services announcing their corporate headquarters here, a planned seventy acre waterfront in, in Geist, renovations and improvements to the nickel plate amphitheater. And, um, some, some of the more popular, in case you haven't, uh, if you've been living under a rock, uh, IKEA, Topgolf, Portillo's are also on that list. So wonderful accomplishments by the, by the city council in this community. So not only have we seen a good outcome externally, internally, I'm very proud of the work that our controller's office does and our entire team here. Um, it's not only what we do, it's the way in which we do it that I'm so proud of. Here again, you will see that we are one of the few communities in the state of Indiana that has received year in, year out the GFO distinguished budget presentation award. This speaks to our ability to communicate and they document the financial or budgeting decisions of this fiscal body to our residents. And it's reviewed by peers. And, uh, it is no easy thing. I remember I was, um, I've been here long enough to remember I was the first one to fill out the application, uh, back when I was started here as a intern, I believe. And, uh, we were fortunate enough to get it then. We've got it every year since. Also, triple-A bond rating, we're the only city in the state of Indiana to receive that. The only other institution that has that is the state of Indiana. And finally, not only do we communicate our policy decisions in our budget document, but we also communicate our, um, financial position for more of the, the financially technical, uh, people in our comprehensive annual financial report, which we also received a GFOA's award for, um, for accomplishment in regard to our capital. So again, it's not only what we do, it's the way in which we do it that, uh, we, we're very proud of. Uh, some of the investments that we're making this year, um, I could really boil it down to do a couple things. People and capital. And that's what I'm most excited about tonight. Uh, because of our sound financial management, because of the, the positive momentum that we have in our city, we're able to do a few very important things. One is invest in our people. Per capita, we have some, we have one of the smallest staffs that you will find, uh, anywhere in the state of Indiana from a municipality standpoint. Not only does that mean we're frugal, but it, it means our people are doing yeoman's work. And this year, we're able to, uh, recognize that and reward them accordingly with a, a five percent, uh, salary increase across the board, which I'm excited and in full support of. Also, uh, for the first time ever, we will be offering the employees the opportunity to receive compensation that they can defer in savings. We think this is, will encourage our employees, uh, to save money. And so we're gonna be, uh, implementing, if the council approves this budget, a one thousand dollar, up to a one thousand dollar match on a four fifty-seven plan, uh, for our employees, which I think is a huge step forward as we try to convince our employees to put money away and think about the future. Not only are we taking care of the people that we currently have, we're also looking to the future. As we continue to grow, we must invest in our, uh, human capital. So, uh, in this budget, I advocate for three additional police officers, three additional firemen, uh, civilian in the police department to help with administrative, uh, work. And then along with that, a part, or a full-time, uh, parks laborer, an EAM technician for Public Works, which is a fancy word for someone who will be working the software that we're now implementing as we drive towards more of a data decision, data-driven organization. We have a sewer wastewater, uh, plant operator CCTV tech, another really fancy title for someone who is going to be televising all of our sewer lines and making sure that we're maintaining that infrastructure to the best of our ability. Also looking for a one, uh, full-time senior labor in the public works department, a project manager or a business solutions group, which I think is a very exciting, um, new chapter for our organization. One of my goals, uh, before this, my term ends here in, in four years, is to modernize and automate our entire organization. Uh, that is a significant, significant, um, undergoing that we're now underway. Elliot Holgren has taken the lead on that in our organization. Very talented young man that I think is really gonna help us move this organization to where we need to be from an enterprise and software perspective and data-driven decision-making. Uh, we're also advocating for an assistant director in our parks department. Uh, people would be shocked given the quality and nature and size of our parks programming that we only have. I think we have under ten employees in our parks department. That runs, uh, Tony Elliott, pretty ragged. What we'd really like to do is bring in an assistant director that would become a chief, chief operating officer and would allow Tony to be more, uh, present and more, um, out in the community, building relationships and, and driving the strategy in the parks department, less of the day-to-day operations. And finally, uh, if you have not noticed, uh, we've been doing a lot of building in the city of Fishers. And in order to make sure that we're, um, eyes-on as much as humanly possible, to make sure that we're protecting not only the, um, the consumers here in the city of Fishers as they build things, but also the life safety issues that come up with building inspections, we would like to add another full-time inspector in our building, uh, permitting inspections division. Uh, proposed capital and equipment highlights, I'll just run through these quickly. As you can see, the new police station is currently underway. We hope to have that open by August of next year. Um, we're, we're replacing thirteen, uh, police SUVs. Um, our fire department, the training site, to clarify on that, we're actually using a portion of our wastewater treatment plant to, um, do a slight, uh, training facility. I wouldn't, I wouldn't even call it quite a facility, but more of a, a training, uh, opportunity for a fireman to stay right here on shift to be able to go there and do some live fire training. We're, uh, replacing a ladder truck. We are, um, replacing two of our fire vehicles with pickup trucks, believe it or not. Several studies have come out recently to talk about the carcinogens that come off of, um, turnout gear. So if you're in a fire and your turnout gear soaks in all that smoke and all those carcinogens, and then you stick it in the back of an SUV, that, um, turnout gear will emit all of those carcinogens in the, in the turnout gear and, uh, can ultimately be hazardous to the firefighters. So we're actually swapping out the SUVs and going to pickup trucks and letting the, the turnout gear go on the back of the pickup trucks. A CCTV truck, so the guy who's gonna be, if you cut one of these, we might as well cut both of these. So the employee that we talked about for the CCTV truck, uh, this is a CCTV truck that he would be driving. Um, and the rest is really, um, financially quick, or financial software system, which is no small undertaking for Lisa and our business solutions group. Um, I believe we've had the same financial software system since the probably mid-eighties, early eighties?
Early eighties.
Early eighties. Um, I think when DOS was still popular. Uh, so we need to upgrade and modernize in that regard. And then, um, various electrical and fire panel upgrades in particular, I think it would be bad if the fire panel upgrade did not work at the fire station. Uh, so we're gonna be working to improve a lot of the building maintenance around here. These are, what I'm really excited about is look at the lineup in terms of, uh, financial investment and capital investment into our, uh, community this upcoming year. One, some people may look at this in, in sigh because of the, uh, traffic congestion we may have as we build these. But I look at it and say, this is a community that really has the ability and opportunity to reinvest in its city. Obviously, the land acquisition for Geist Park, um, one hundred thirty-sixth and southeastern roundabout, Morgan Drive rehabilitation, South Street rehabilitation, Trail and Pathway projects, one hundred thirteenth street trail, concrete repair and seal of joints, passing blister on Brook School Road, ninety-sixth Street at a turn lane, one hundred thirteenth and Florida Road Roundabout, one hundred twenty-sixth and Reynolds Drive intersection improvements, one hundred twenty-sixth and Allisonville Road intersection improvements, one hundred thirty-first Allisonville Road improvements, one hundred thirty-first Cumberland, uh, road improvements, and then our just overall overlay project. That is a significant amount of work that will be accomplished this upcoming year to yet again alleviate some of the traffic congestions in our community. So just from a brief overview of our, uh, budget, the two thousand eighteen operating and capital budget will be just shy of ninety million, eighty-nine million, one hundred ninety-eight thousand. Our debt service is fourteen point six million and our total budget being a hundred and three million with cash reserves of nearly thirty-eight million, which once again, I think demonstrates the strong financial position that we're in, that we're at, you know, almost nearly a forty percent cash reserve overall. One of the things that I, I do want to talk a little bit about and kind of deconstruct is there is a relatively significant budget increase from the year before. But keep in mind, um, we're budgeting our rainy day funds, uh, received from two thousand sixteen. If you remember when the state legislature gave back our money, uh, for road funding, we, we have that budgeted so we can accomplish our projects. And then we have, for the first time, a wheel tax, which we never had before. So the revenue coming in there, we've appropriated. And then, uh, motor vehicle highway fund with the state legislature, funding, um, additional monies for, uh, road improvements throughout the state of Indiana. That also includes distributions to locals. So that went up as well. This just gives you a brief, uh, breakdown of where the money's going. Uh, once again, I think, uh, a solid budget in terms of the breakdown. Uh, this gives you by department. This is just our advertising per state statute. Uh, what probably everybody, uh, is most curious about is with all this investment, with all these opportunities to continue to move our, uh, community forward, what does this look like from a tax implication to our residents? Uh, we feel fairly confident that it would equate to about a one point five cent increase in our overall property tax rate. So going from point six five oh two, point six six five six. To put that in perspective, for someone who owns between a hundred and two hundred fifty thousand dollar home, they would pay somewhere between ten and twenty-five dollars more a year. Uh, we will be the lowest. We will be the lowest tax rate, continue to be the lowest tax rate of all of the 15 largest Indiana cities. This gives you an idea in Hamilton County where we, where we rank, we're, we would just be slightly above Cicero unless Cicero were to adjust our tax rate. And this gives you an idea of where we stand with our largest cities throughout the state of Indiana. And the one to the left that it's hard to see, that's actually what we are currently today, just showing that we would pick up a little bit there. Be happy to answer any questions that the city council may have. If not, we can hold a public hearing and be happy to answer any questions after that. Council President?
Any questions?
David, if I could, real quick, thank, as Chair of the Finance Committee, appreciate the work of the committee, Cecilia, Selena, and John, for all their diligence in the last few months and working through this process, but also Mayor Fadness and Controller Lisa and your office. This always could, could be a contentious period of time as we, as we work through this process, but the transparency, communication, and collaboration are always high and we appreciate that. So on behalf of the committee and the full council, we appreciate that.
Brad?
Yes.
So that is underway, actually, and I'm glad you brought that up. That, we're hoping will be done by Halloween timeframe and should be far, far better than what we have in here today. So yes, absolutely underway. I'll stand by and wait for the public hearing.
Okay. Opening up the budget for public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on this, please come Sir, if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Joe Bergen, and I'm inquiring about carousel. I was wondering if we had any money left over for a possible carousel.
We're going to do a Ferris wheel instead.
Even better.
Do you have a relative model?
It's the first time we've heard that comment. Anyone else, please? Okay, we'll close the public hearing seeing none.
Not none, we had Joe.
Yes.
Pretty sure Joe was at the wrong council meeting, the Carmel City Council meeting happens next week, I believe, so.
Any other comments for the mayor?
So just to be clear tonight, we're not approving the budget, we're only holding public hearing. The final vote will be at the next council meeting. In the interim, I will tell you, we will make every effort to post all of this information. It's been advertised per state statute, but talking to Asher, our communications director, this presentation will be posted online, and we'll have all the information available for residents.
And then, go ahead.
At what point will this go up on the transparency portal? Will it be after it's approved?
Transparency portal. Our transparency portal, not DLGFs?
DLGFs approve forms, are we, can be counted, but like I said, it's about 75 pages, and then all of the departments and divisions, that is as part of the judge's day, and then we're giving up on our, we can really, that, those forms.
I would think after it's approved, we would go into detail.
Yeah.
Yep.
Then a couple of things, Mayor, and you know, I've been through this, so I just basically stated for, for the public's benefit, but the, the cash reserves, and since I've been here long enough and you have too, we've been through a couple of recessions. That's a very, very important thing that this council has maintained from actually all councils. And it's very important just because in your day, in your daily life, every six months your tax bills due, and you can do it two ways. One, you can put a little bit away and you can make sure it's there, or you can wait until the last minute and you're kind of hamstrung. And then compare that when you have a recession and, and your incomes go down a little bit. So it's very important to have that 50%, the 50% is basically, because a lot of ours are due every six months. So that's why we keep that and this council's maintain it. So I think it's a very important tool, and you don't really see it in good years, but you really see who plans for it in bad years. And then with that in mind, I know that you've done this, but the additional staff, obviously that salary benefits and all the other things, those are incorporated as you start to look forward, that those cash balances are still made with the additional staff because we've increased.
Absolutely. We actually, our real focus is three years out when we do these budgets. It's not this year, it's not 18, it's 2020.
And then the additional paving, I think, is that up to almost $3 million?
That's correct, yeah. We've made significant progress. Even this year, you can see it in some of the neighborhoods in Berkeley Grove, where we actually paved the entire neighborhood two years ago. A year ago, that would not be possible. With the matching grant this year, we were able to do it, and next year, we're really looking forward to being able to put a significant dent and almost triple our resurfacing.
Right, because there's a lot of areas in Fishers that we've never, ever had to say this, but we have aging roads.
Yeah.
And we've never had to do that, but when you get to that 15 to 20-year mark, then you hit that. So that's why we started to look at that over the last few years and increase the, the funding mechanisms in order to do that. And then the last thing is the, the budget, you, you mentioned this, but the total budget, there's a total budget number that's out there, and that's basically how you run the government, but then also capital projects. That is different from year to year because you have different projects that you do, and it's more than it was in the previous year because you have additional funds that have come back to do some additional projects.
Correct.
So basically restating the same thing.
The layman, I think, doesn't read these documents all that often, may see a big difference. In reality, we're doing all the things that we said in this budget, and the only financial implication to the resident to date would be the passenger wheel tax last year, just $25 a car, and then the 1.5 cent increase in property taxes, which would be $10 to $25 to a $100,000 to $250,000 home.
Any other questions? If not, we've had, I guess, first and second reading.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving now to number 11. R071717 requests you to approve a UDO change.
Good evening, once again. Tony Bugatto, Director of Planning and Zoning. This item before you is a change to our UDO for open space standards, and it's a continuation of implementing our Fishers 2040 Plan. By the end of the year, hopefully, I'm hoping to bring a whole new UDO for you, but in the meantime, there'll be sections that are probably, need to be updated on a one-to-one in public hearings so that there's more transparent to the public what's being changed, and this is one of those sections. The best way I can highlight the new open space standards without reading them all to you verbatim, which would take very long, and I'm sure, sure we don't want to do that. The new ordinance highlights the following goals. One is to make open space purposeful. Two, activated versus passive open space, which is what our UDO allows today, or pretty much what happens out of most development projects, it becomes just passive open space. Looking for multifunctional open space, so maybe we'll get a carousel in there, if someone's brave enough to take on that. Connectivity, a big feature, connectivity within, not just within development, which would happen today in its own private development, but connectivity to open trails and public trails and parks that the city has, and also neighboring developments. Identifying who bears the cost of maintenance for this, in HOAs in particular, there's conversations. Sometimes I think HOAs are not aware that they're responsible for maintaining their own open space, and we want to just clarify that. And then creating standards, we're actually building in some flexibility for the mayor or myself to be able to review proposals that are not accounted for because we want to, we don't want to anticipate that we know everything, and we want to be open and flexible to alternatives to what we've outlined in the standards. So there's some flexibility there. Just to kind of highlight, 30,000-foot level, what we're talking about for residential, the standards are meant, again, to build kind of like plaza areas, multifunctional, again, trying to create, in this example here, some of the residential standards would actually allow for porches or courtyards that interact to count as open space so that you, creates a better sense of place in a community that will have, I think, more character and viability long-term. With commercial, we don't have anything built today that I can pinpoint exactly, but we do have some approvals in process. We have the yard PUD here on the left, which highlights a lot of green space around our, our planned food accelerator and all the other restaurants there. And then our, the Sunbeam PUD we approved has a significant amount of open space than, I would say, any other commercial center we approved since I've been here. And around, featuring a promenade around the lake and some open space with some art features and connectivity here. So these are some approvals that are already in place today that I would say now we're putting in standards for anyone coming in under our base zoning, like C3, C2, whether it's not a PUD, we can still get these kind of amenities into that kind of development. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions. We went through over a year of working with the community, community stakeholders, committee members, that was part of the implementation plan on Chapter 6 of our Fishers Comp Plan. And interestingly enough, both committees that were meant to talk about architecture came to talk about a sense of place beyond architecture, which included open space. So a lot of this recommendation came from both of those committees. And then as we developed these standards, we did meet with representatives from Baggy, Polte, and Steve Harden met with us, as well as some commercial builders like Sunbeam, Envoy, and some other representatives. So this has been through that process and have received overall support, as well as the Plan Commission reviewed this at the last public hearing and recommended approval as is presented. If I have any questions, the staff, I am recommending suspend the rules and adoption on second and third reading.
Okay, thank you very much. And since it is second reading, is there, it said that no one spoke at the Plan Commission, is anyone here about this? There are no carousel portions of the code, so. Okay, just wanted to check, any questions in the council or motion?
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and approve on second reading.
Motion by Pete, seconded by Brad, or, I'm sorry, Rich. For that motion, all those say aye.
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 Motion to approve.
Motion by Pete, seconded by Rich. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Moving on to number 12. 091817 requests to approve nickel plate code, a southern gateway. Mr. Davis.
Good evening, for the record, my name is Dale Davis, I'm a planner with the city of Fishers. The next item before you is a set of text amendments to our nickel plate district code to create standards for creating a southern gateway. Actually goes a little step farther than that and creates standards for all four gateways to our nickel plate district. To kind of set the framework for this change, we expanded the nickel plate district not too long ago and to include a few neighborhoods at the edges of the nickel plate. In this time, we've been able to kind of see what development patterns are happening, see what the development community is interested in, and really see what products are kind of selling around us. And we've seen a lot of interest in, in these properties. We also saw a great, or a great opportunity to really create some meaningful gateways without actually building a gateway. We could do that through our built environment. The first one that identified itself was this tip of the kind of Morgan Meadows, Lantern Road development. Some impactful building could be placed there. We also have the Maple Dell subdivision, we have the couple of pull the sacks off of, of Lantern as well. So what we've done is created a series of requirements for architectural features that would be required of any development that goes there. We've allowed some slightly bigger buildings just at the tip of the Morgan Meadows neighborhood. Now that would be to give that impactful feel at the end of the neighborhood, but not to allow a huge development at that end either. We want to be cognizant of the fact that we do want this to be mostly residential and mostly redevelopment of single-family residential. With that, we've also included, it's kind of a little text change, just to clarify what office meant in the nickel plate district. We had that question come up, and our Unified Development Ordinance definitions provide six or seven different definitions for office, but none was just office, so we wanted to specify which one specifically we were talking about. With that, be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, we'd like to hold first reading and move on to Plan Commission for the public
Have first reading.
I've tried to keep an eye on this area because I've got some projects going on at the north, I'm talking about the southern node on the north end of that. So I'd like to get a little bit more information, but I'll get with you as, as things move on, vote for the public. If anyone's interested, October the 4th is the Plan Commission, and then that would be back before the council, November the 20th, for additional time. So this is not something that happens immediately, but again, October the 4th and November 20th. We've had first reading.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Moving on to number 13. 091817D requests to approve the salary ordinance. CC?
Good evening, for the record, CC Conover, HR Director for the city of Fishers. The first item I have to present for you is actually an amendment to this year's salary ordinance, the 2017 salary ordinance, and the request is to add a job title, Engineering Assistant Director. This is not adding an additional position, it's actually backfilling someone who's leaving and reevaluating the position and putting it in the appropriate grade.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and approve on first reading.
Motion by Pete, seconded by Todd. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Pete, seconded by Todd. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to number 14. 091817B, which is now the 2018 ordinance.
Yes, before you is a proposal for the 2018 salary ordinance. It incorporates the information that you receive from the mayor through the budgeting process in terms of titles and any other changes. The other changes that are incorporated into this document include moving all the salary ranges up 5%. It includes the mayor's salary changing and the purpose salary changing. The document before you does not have changes for city council or city judge.
Thank you. Then Brad, I think you wanted to ask at first reading.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to amend the proposed 2018 salary ordinance, motion that all elected city councilmen receive the same raise as the employees and other elected officials.
Were we going to include the judge, Brad?
Is that what you mean by that, council and judge?
Would you like me, all other city councilmen and judge? Thank you, Pete.
I'm going to second that.
So motion and a second, and all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against?
May.
Two, two, three, four, five, six, seven, so we've got five to two.
Five to two.
So five passes, is that right?
No.
Yes.
Yes.
For first reading, we're only doing first reading.
That's just first reading. Okay.
We're having a vote on the amendment. Now you have to go forward on the vote to have first reading, if that's all you'd like to hear tonight, or make a motion for first reading.
Cecilia and Eric, no. The other five, yes.
Sorry, Jennifer. Okay, so is there a motion for first reading then?
Motion for first reading.
Okay, so just first reading.
Thanks, CC.
Thank you. So moving on to number 15. 091817C requests to approve ordinance for a text amendment to the UDO. Mr. Bugatto again.
Yes, for the final time tonight, this is another amendment to the UDO. This is related to our internal process when a rezone or a text amendment is initiated from the city's perspective of Plan Commission or city council. Currently, for whatever reason, the UDO has a 30-day requirement for hearing after it's been initiated. Given that our Plan Commission meets once a month, that actually puts us into a 45 and a almost 60-day process before we can go to hearing, and this is above and beyond state requirement, so staff is going to request that this be amended to be consistent with state law, and we'll go to Plan Commission next month and back to council. You have any questions, the staff?
First reading.
First reading, any questions? Okay. That was the last item listed, is there anything further, Tony or Chris or Leah?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a question for Joe. Joe, I'm not sure if there'll be a carousel operator position, but there is a position that will be opened in coming year with the wastewater treatment plant. CCTV. I would really encourage you to apply. Think you'd be well qualified.
Yes, sir.
I was going to do a little more discuss some chickens.
I had breakfast with a vet friend the other day, and he has been working with the Veterans Administration on the PST individuals, vets that have come back, and they have found this last year, working with a goat, don't laugh, because I kind of did, working with a goat has done tremendous things to help the PST vets better than a dog. So just an FYI to let you know the things that are changing. So, just an FYI to let you know the things that are changing to help our vets that come back.
That's a good point. I think some of you guys know this, but one, one thing that I do is I'm a part of a sailing group and we go to Nantucket every year, and it's not really about that, but it's, we've welcomed wounded warriors with us the last five years, and it's actually been a more fulfilling time. I've gone 15 years with the last five with the vets. It's been very fulfilling. But what we've done here is at the Indianapolis Sailing Club, on the Wednesday nights, we have anyone that's a veteran that wants to come out, that can come out and sail and kind of learn, and then there's some camaraderie after that. And we're working to, so that they can learn and then they can go to that Nantucket trip later. But what we're finding is just putting people in the right, in the right spot so that they can talk and interact, that's been a good thing. So, whether it's animals or people and things like that, they were there for us and we've got to support them. So, that's one thing that I do if people want more information. That's it. We've had a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Joe, please leave us.
So, this is good.
It's online. Wait, what is it?